Good evening and welcome to the May 18th, 2020 meeting of the Oceanside Planning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hunt, would you please take the roll?
Good evening. Chairperson Crehal.
Here.
Vice Chair Goodkind.
President.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Busk.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
It indicated he would be absent tonight. And lastly, Commissioner Custer.
Here.
So you do have six, which is six commissioners available tonight or present tonight, all in the chambers. You do have a general plan amendment, I believe? Is that, no, just zoning ordinance? So zoning ordinance, do we need a majority, Barbara, of the present or just a majority for zoning ordinance? Just, just a majority for that vote?
All right.
Present.
Sounds good. Thank you. Do we have any speakers on items one or two off agenda items?
I'm not aware of any, sir.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to item number three, the approval of the minutes from the April 20, 2020 meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes as submitted? Seeing none, go ahead and accept the minutes approved by unanimous consent. Item number four, Left Coast LLC. I was made aware that there was a request by the applicant and staff to continue this item, I believe date certain. Mr. Vantes, would you like to?
Yes, staff and the applicant have come to an agreement to continue the item to July 13th.
Are there any objections, any comments? Commissioner Rosales?
Just a question, is there something new material information that has come forward that they requested this, what changed?
The applicant would like more time to work on their application.
Any other comments or objection to continuing the item? I'm not seeing any, so I think we're going to be okay with continuing that item to the date it was mentioned. And we will move on to item number five, which, do we want, if we can vote, I didn't hear any objections, so I just considered it unanimous. But if we'd like to take a roll call for folks, I'm not seeing anybody. Y'all good? All right. Then we'll go on to item number five, the time extension streamlining process for City of Oceanside Projects. Ms. Chen.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Crehal, planning commissioners. I'm Tiffany Chen with the Planning Division. Before you use a proposed time extension streamlining effort as proposed by city staff, the request includes a zoning text amendment, ZA 20-2 subdivision amendment, SA 20-1, and a local coastal program amendment, LCPA 20-2, to amend Articles 1, 17, 19, 24, 30, 41, 43, and 46 of the zoning ordinance and Articles 4, 6, and 7 of the subdivision ordinance to allow for administrative review of time extension requests. An uncodified automatic one-year time extension would also be included in response to COVID-19. The amended text would be included as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. The current time extension process is outlined in various articles of the zoning ordinance and in Article 4 of the subdivision ordinance. Currently discretionary permits such as development plans and regular coastal permits, et cetera, are valid for a period of two years from the date of approval. A project must be vested, meaning they have to make some progress on establishing the project, such as through substantial grading or construction, within those two years. Or if the applicant realizes that they'll be unable to vest within the two years, then a time extension application should be submitted between 90 and 30 days before the date of expiration. They may request an extension for a period or periods not to exceed a total of three years. The time extension must be approved by the original approving authority, usually before the Planning Commission or the city council at a public hearing. You may recall that between 2008 and 2013, certain projects qualified for automatic time extensions to address the previous economic downturn. In recent years, since the conclusion of the automatic time extensions, staff has reviewed time extension requests for projects that were set to expire after their original two-year approval period. Typically applicants had legitimate reasons for not being able to vest their projects, such as difficulty in securing financing, working through environmental aspects with outside agencies, and working through technical aspects of grading permit review. Although there were no changes to the scope of work, considerable time and resources to process the requests through the discretionary review process, including staff reports, resolutions, and presentations for public hearing, had to be done by city staff, and significant time of the applicant was used as well. This effort is also in response to one of city council's strategic goals for this fiscal year, for the streamlining of certain review processes, one of which is the time extension process. Staff's proposed administrative time extension process would be outlined in a newly added Section 150 to Article 1 of the zoning ordinance and revised language in the subdivision ordinance to match. Entitlements would be valid for three years after the date of approval rather than the current two years. Time extension requests may be submitted up to the date of expiration instead of between 90 and 30 days prior to expiration. The application would be reviewed against objective findings, such as legitimate reasons for needing the extension, the project remaining consistent with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and other city policies at the time of original approval, and physical circumstances and surroundings near the project have not substantially changed since the original approval. The application would be processed administratively and approved by the city planner or city engineer without public hearing. A notice of a decision would be sent to surrounding property owners and occupants per the original project notification list. There would be a maximum potential of three one-year extensions. And as mentioned, staff is proposing an uncodified automatic one-year time extension for projects that are unexpired as of March 16th, 2020, the date that the city declared a local emergency in response to COVID-19. The key changes include extending the original approval period by one year from two to three years. The review and decision of the request would be at staff level, approved by the city planner or city engineer. There would be no public hearings and the decision would not be appealable. If a time extension request is denied, then the applicant may submit a new application for their project for review through the normal discretionary review process. Time extension requests would be limited to one year per request. Currently applicants have the option of requesting two years or even three years of extension at one time, though staff is more likely to support a one-year extension request. Other, a table was attached to the staff report, which provides a survey of time extension processes in some other jurisdictions. Seven out of the nine jurisdictions processed their time extensions administratively, similar to this current proposal for Oceanside. Three out of the nine have initial three-year approval periods for their entitlements. The potential time extension time periods range from one year to six years total. Oceanside would be within the range of the surveyed jurisdictions with a proposed three-year initial approval and a total of three years of potential time extensions. It should be noted that time extension requests are not for the review of changes to project scope or to overturn previous approvals. Changes to project scope would be reviewed through a different process, either through a substantial conformity or entitlement revision, depending on the scope of work. Projects also still go through their normal appeal period following the date of their original approval. Regarding the proposed uncodified automatic one-year time extension in response to COVID-19, staff believes this is a proactive approach to help the economy, which may suffer similarly to the previous Great Recession. Regarding public outreach and input, staff had originally planned to bring this item to EDC, but it was canceled in April due to COVID-19. It was canceled. And no comments have been received in response to the newspaper notice that has been published or the webpage that's currently on our city website on this topic. Thus, staff recommends the Planning Commission confirm issuance of an exemption from SEQA per the common sense rule that SEQA only applies to projects which have the potential of causing a significant effect on the environment, Section 15061B3, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020-P15 recommending approval of ZA 20-2, SA 20-1, and LCPA 20-2. And this item is scheduled to be heard by the city council on June 3rd. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? And I'm also going to, do we have any public comments received?
There were no public comments received.
Okay, so then questions or comments from commissioners, Commissioner Busk?
Tiffany, do you have a slide of that table that you referred to?
I don't have this.
It was not, it was not in my packet, and I didn't go to the website.
Oh, it was an attachment to, it was online, attached to the agenda.
And I didn't look at online.
But I have it. I have it printed out. Maybe the overhead can be used.
If our tech guy can get it up.
And basically, I think every city other than San Juan, Capistrano, that was in that table is administrative.
So which cities we're surveying?
Most North County cities and a few South, though. So South San Juan, San Clemente, Irvine, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, Encinitas, Chula Vista, and Carlsbad.
Thank you.
And there it is. Any other comments or questions at this juncture? Commissioner Rosales?
It's three pages, so I can turn the page if you need to.
Just a comment that I think Louise and I were on the commission in 2008, 2009 when a similar item came for our consideration, and I think we called it the Great Recession back then. So we saw a lot of time extensions on projects, so this rings very familiar. So I think it's along the same lines of what we had before. I don't remember the details of that, but either way, I'm in support of this being something we want to do at this point because, like the previous one in 2008, 2009, it's clearly a need to be able to give people some time on their projects to come back to us at another point when things have settled down and they're a better situation. So with that being said, I fully support doing the same this time.
And I don't have my screen, so did you have something, Vice Chair Goodkind?
Do you have your screen?
No. So just wave your hand or something, and I'll get to you.
No, I completely agree. This seems to be reasonable and sensible, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that, sorry?
May I come in before you motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Busk?
Thanks. A couple of questions. One of the, on page five, one of the selection or the extension criteria, A, is that the approval remains consistent with general plan, zoning ordinance, city policies, standards in place. Does that include variances in CUPs granted at the time? How are those taken, how are those included in that verbiage?
Commissioner Busk, that would include any entitlements that were approved, and we would compare them to the policies that were in place at the time they were originally approved.
So a CUP and a variance would be captured under the word "policy" at the time of the issuance of the original proposal?
Well, it's an entitlement that was reviewed per policies at the time of review.
Would be captured under the, under the scope of entitlements?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, also, Mr. Chairman, if I could, also, A refers to zoning ordinance, and so the variances procedure is in the zoning ordinance along with a conditional use permit.
I was just wondering about the actual grant, whatever was granted, but it looks like it would be captured under entitlements. The only concern I have about this is that it ends up making projects at least six years, potentially six years long, and in the out years, years four, five, and six, there's no way for the public to challenge the extensions. I can see things won't change in two or three years, maybe four years, but by the time five or six years go out, it seems like the public ought to have the right to challenge an extension. And the way this policy is written, there is no, there is no longer an option for the public to have any challenging for extensions. That concerns me.
And I think there was a, you know, there's discussion in there about, you know, substantial changes would lead to a substantial conformity discussion, or else even potentially coming back for a public review process. Did you want to discuss what would maybe trigger some of those happening?
So this, Commissioner Crehal, Chairperson Crehal, these time extension requests that we're trying to streamline are for projects that have basically no changes to scope of work. So if they are changing the scope of work in some way, it would have to go through a different review process, like substantial conformity or a revised entitlement. So these extension projects should not, should still meet the original zoning and general plan policies that were in place.
Yeah, so if there's no substantial changes, what basis would there be for a public, another public review?
In five years, neighborhoods can change substantially. That, that would be my concern. That a neighborhood, in fact, does change substantially over the course of four or five years, and yet the public, the new public, because it's now a changed neighborhood, has no way to input on a previously existing project that, in fact, had expired.
Mr. Chairman, I think the way staff looks at it is if the project was approved and those criteria in which it was weighed against have not changed, or pardon me, if it's still consistent with those original criteria, then what would be the, what, what would be the, the purpose of putting it out for public review? And if you recall, we've had several time extensions that have been brought before the Planning Commission that people wanted to re-litigate is probably the wrong word, but they wanted to weigh in on the merits of the project, the original approval. And one time extension was even appealed to the council. So I think staff, under this direction from the council, direction to streamline that process, is saying, well, let's just set up some objective criteria. If it meets that criteria, it's a ministerial process, and we get away from this process currently where people want to reweigh the merits of the original approval.
And, and if I can continue?
Please.
And you do cover that under Point B, physical circumstances and surroundings near the project site have not substantially changed. And I guess it's the word substantially, and who decides, or how do you decide whether the neighborhood has changed substantially or not?
And Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I think that would be very difficult to determine criteria on what is substantial or not. We have substantial conformities, and those are very subjective. The law has qualitative standards, and those are very hard to quantify. So again, it's, it's a process where staff would look at it and say, is this a substantial change in the neighborhood, similar to what is a substantial change in the project? And it is open to interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair?
Anybody else? Sorry? I, I think this is consistent with best practices around the region, and so therefore I will move to confirm an exemption from SEQA based on the common sense rule that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential of causing a significant effect on the environment, and that we adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020-P15 recommending approval of zone amendment, ZA 2000002 subdivision amendment, SA 200002, and local coastal plan amendment, LCPA 2000002, to allow the streamlined administrative review of time extension requests and an automatic one-year time extension in response to COVID-19 with findings of approval attached therein.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Rosales has a second. Further deliberation on the motion? Not seeing any, then I think we'll go ahead and go to a vote on the motion. All those in favor, oh, we do have the voting system. Great.
Oh, no, we don't.
We don't have it.
Don't? Okay, then. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I see, it looks like everybody. Any opposed, raise your hand. Not seeing any, any abstaining? None. All right. Mr. Hunt?
We will record that as six in favor, zero against, on the recommendation to council.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number six, the CAP or Climate Action Plan Consistency Checklist Ordinances. And I think we've got Mr. Cunningham coming up to the plate.
Disclosures or no?
Yeah, of course. I mean, if you have some disclose, I, for these city policies, but go ahead, Commissioner Rosales.
No, I'll just disclose I'm here, and I read the report, and I think we got an email from Mr. Bullock, email or letter, and the only other disclosure, I'm sure Russ is going to do an outstanding job because this is his forte.
Yeah, would anybody like to disclose anything about the CAP and your potential conflict of interest with it? Okay. I think with city policies, disclosures are relevant only if you probably had a project yourself, which would probably make it a problem for you being on the commission in general. So Russ, whenever you're ready.
Commissioners, good evening. Nice to see you. I apologize for all that racket I just made up there, all in the service of using the restroom. So I'm Russ Cunningham with the city's Planning Division. Almost exactly one year ago, the city council followed the recommendation of this body and approved the city's first climate action plan as part of the first phase of the city's comprehensive general plan update. Let me get my presentation in front of you here. Okay. The Climate Action Plan, or CAP, outlines a range of greenhouse gas emissions reduction measures meant to reduce the city's carbon footprint in a manner that's consistent with state policies and state goals. The CAP provides a path to local GHG emissions reduction that complies with SEQA, the Environmental Quality Act, and to a large extent clarifies for the development community, for the business community, and for residents, their respective roles in reducing emissions here in Oceanside. Most of the emissions reduction measures in the CAP emphasize education, incentives, and voluntary action. A limited number of measures establish new standards for new development, standards that help to mitigate the additional emissions generated by the kinds of projects that are regularly reviewed by the Planning Commission. These standards address renewable energy facilities, electric vehicle parking and charging facilities, urban forestry, and transportation demand management, typically referred to by the acronym TDM. We're seeking Planning Commission support for zoning text amendments that would implement these new standards and effectuate a key component of the CAP, the Climate Action Plan Consistency Checklist, which does two things. It ensures that new development supports the city's emissions reduction efforts, and it streamlines the SEQA process for projects that are subject to environmental review, and it is a component that is now quite common in climate action plans and generally favored by the development community and the business community. So one thing I won't do in this presentation is speak much to why our community should do its part to reduce GHG emissions. The scientific evidence of human activity contributing to rising global temperatures is overwhelming, and this warming is already having significant effects on the environment, on the global economy, and the social and political stability of certain parts of the world. However, if you are interested in having this conversation, I'm happy to provide detail and analysis as desired. So for context, let's take a look at Table 17. I think your staff report packet indicated Table 18. I apologize for that. Table 17 and 18 are very similar to one another. Table 17 identifies all of the emissions reduction measures of the Climate Action Plan. These emission reduction measures are placed into five categories that I will share with you now. Some measures involve a collection of actions. So these measures, in purple, are those that address building energy consumption. These measures address water conservation, more specifically water use, water supply, the treatment of water, the distribution of water, and the emissions associated with those processes. And these are measures that address our management of solid waste. Emissions Reduction Measure E2, under the title Solar Photovoltaic Promotion Program, is where you will find the renewable energy standards that I'll be speaking to in just a moment, along with some additional measures that you see there. And this measure that speaks to, that's W3, Emissions Reduction Measure W3, increased local water supply. I will speak to a measure that is part of the consistency checklist, but not a measure that is before you tonight, that is not under consideration tonight, because we already have a policy, we already have an ordinance that speaks to new developments' obligation to help us expand our recycled water infrastructure. So these measures here are measures that address land use, transportation, and the important linkage between our land use patterns and the mobility options that we provide to residents and visitors and our workforce. Measure TL2, Electric Vehicle Promotion, is the umbrella under which the ordinance before you on EV charging and parking is located. And TL5, Transportation Demand Management, as you would expect, is the category under which we will discuss the ordinance dealing with TDM. So that's four of the five. There's a broad category, the fifth category, urban greening and local agriculture. Measure AF1, Urban Forestry Program, includes calls upon the city to develop standards for tree canopy in private development, and that is what is before you this evening. You'll also see that we have actions here under this particular measure to You'll also see that we have actions here under this particular measure to promote the expansion of the urban forest within the public right-of-way and on city-owned properties as well. And we may be coming back to you at some point with measures that will address that obligation that we've established for ourselves in the Climate Action Plan. So the CAP Consistency Checklist, as I said, is meant to ensure that development meets the expectations of the CAP while also streamlining what can be the very time-consuming and expensive process of calculating the specific emissions associated with individual projects. So these measures, these checkboxes so to speak, break down really into two categories, one of which speaks to the location of the project and the other of which speaks to the design of the project. So with respect to location, projects that lie within smart growth opportunity areas, you've heard me talk about these SGOAs before. These are identified by Sandag on their Smart Growth Concept Map. Most of these lie within either the Coast Highway Corridor or the Oceanside Boulevard Corridor. They are focused around our rail transit stations. There is also an SGOA located out north of the river at Vandergriff and North River Road. So projects located within SGOAs, essentially within a half-mile radius of those Sprinter stations and other transit amenities, qualify to utilize the checklist. Those within priority transit corridors, and those will be defined by the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan, that is part of Phase Two of our general plan update, and those corridors are Oceanside Boulevard, Mission Avenue, Coast Highway, Vista Way. Projects that are consistent with our land use and zoning designations qualify for the checklist. And projects that perhaps are proposing amendment of land use and zoning designations but would not generate emission levels greater than what would otherwise be approvable, permissible in that, under that land use and zoning designation would also be eligible for the checklist. As projects get out away from these areas noted here, we would be asking that they do more, that they conduct energy efficiency audits under the auspices of SDGNE. SDGNE has a couple of programs that developers and property owners can avail themselves of. And we would also expect that these projects would look closely at the vehicle miles traveled, the vehicle miles generated by the project, and look for ways to reduce VMT consistent with the forthcoming implementation of Senate Bill 743, which if you haven't heard about SB 743 and the fundamental shift that will bring about in how we analyze traffic in the context of SEQA, you will be hearing a lot about it going forward. So the other criteria on the checklist are those related to the design of the project. And this is where the ordinances we're going to speak about tonight come in and where, as I mentioned before, a recycled water infrastructure measure or requirement is part of the checklist but not really part of our discussion this evening. So let's start with renewable energy facilities. Generally, we're talking about solar photovoltaic facilities, but we wanted to leave the door open for wind generation and potentially other renewable energy sourcing. So rather than call this a PV ordinance, a solar PV ordinance, we're calling it a renewable energy ordinance. So you see here some solar carports. You've probably seen these popping up in various parts of the region. Obviously, there are some trade-offs with these facilities with respect to landscape and tree canopy, but as you can see in this example, you can have both with thoughtful design. So what I'm going to offer you here as I talk about these four ordinances is what we're proposing, how the state has weighed in with its own standards, and then a few considerations that I think worth, that are worth bearing in mind, most of which are addressed in the staff report. So with respect to renewable energy facilities, what we propose, again, consistent with the CAP measure, is that new development of a certain threshold, of a certain scale, install renewable energy facilities supplying 50% of estimated electricity demand. These are the thresholds. Multifamily residential development exceeding 24 dwelling units, commercial and industrial development exceeding 12,499 square feet, industrial development exceeding 24,999 square feet. So those are the thresholds at which this standard would apply. We also propose that additions of 1,500 square feet or greater ensure that renovated buildings are solar-ready. Solar-ready is a little bit of an ambiguous term, but it's fundamentally about making sure that there is lot area or roof area that can accommodate future solar facilities at an appropriate scale. So what does the state have to say about renewable energy facilities? You probably know that the state now requires new residential development, that's single-family and multifamily, under four stories, to install renewable energy facilities supplying 100% of estimated electricity demand. And new non-residential, excuse me, new non-residential development is to be designed to be solar-ready. So where's the difference here? The difference is, in the residential sector, when we have development over three stories, this would kick in, the local standard would kick in, and it would also be applicable, as shown on the left there, to commercial, industrial, institutional uses, non-residential uses. It's probably a matter of time before the state requires the same of non-residential uses, but that is not the case at this time. So some things to think about. There are various ways to finance solar photovoltaic. You can purchase it, you can lease it, you can enter into purchase agreements with vendors that essentially sell that power, give you some and sell the rest. So there are various ways to pay upfront, to pay over time. We have an alternative. So there's a theme here which is looking for ways to provide as much flexibility as we can in how these standards are met. And so we've concluded that in the event that it is infeasible for a project to establish these facilities on-site, we would allow that such a project, if available, purchase a renewable portfolio through the utility, or if at some point we have a community choice aggregation here in Oceanside, to purchase a portfolio that is at least 75% renewable. Why 75%? Because that accords with our 2030 goal of 75% renewable energy by one means or another. We find in our research that most solar facilities see a positive rate of return within eight years of installation. I can tell you that a big factor in the residential sector is whether or not you're charging electric vehicles with that power. We have solar in our household and we have an electric vehicle and we amortize the cost of our solar within three years because we don't have transportation costs and we don't have an energy bill. So that adds up. That's close to $300 a month. You can do the math and that'll give you an idea of what we invested in our solar resources. And some of the benefits of what we might call distributed energy, where we're not relying on the grid as much, we're not relying on power that comes from who knows where, but we're starting to generate more power locally. Of course, that brings more local control. Whether CCA is inevitable or not is an open question, but outside of that context, having more control over rates, more control over the sources of power, and generally over the extent to which generation is occurring locally or somewhere else, that may be something that benefits the city in the long run. What CCAs are finding is that they can spend residual revenue generated by fees on local projects. They can invest in energy efficiency, they can invest in more renewable power in their own communities, and they don't have to rely on programs that come down from the state level or from the local utility. They can create their own. And then finally, resilience against regional grid outages. You'll recall that less than a year ago, in the Bay Area primarily, there were outages, planned outages, based on high winds and fire risk that caused a fair amount of disarray up in the Bay Area. Those outages could occur down here if we have similar conditions. The more we can bring power closer to home, the less likely we are to experience that phenomenon. So moving on to EV parking and charging facilities, here's an example of Level 2 charging facilities. With Level 2 charging, you can get about 10 to 20 miles of charge in about an hour's time, and you're probably seeing these facilities starting to pop up around the city. I can tell you from experience that two years ago, Oceanside was a charging desert. That is no longer the case and that's very encouraging. So again, what are we proposing? What does the state require and what should we be thinking about? In terms of what we're recommending, we recommend that new development requiring five or more parking spaces reserve 15% of those spaces for zero emission vehicles and equip 50% of those reserved spaces with Level 2 EV chargers. We would round down any fractional requirements for parking spaces and for charging facilities. Multifamily residential with private garages where the parking isn't common, it would be very difficult to require that those have common charging facilities. So what we've come to is a requirement for a 240-volt outlet in those garages, which is the equivalent of Level 2 EV charging. So the state requires that new development that involves 10 or more parking spaces reserve 6% of spaces for zero emission vehicles and that all reserved spaces be equipped with Level 2 infrastructure. So you don't have to install the charging stations, but you have to have the conduit, you have to have the power source routed to those spaces for future charging facilities. In the case of the state, fractional requirements are rounded up. So some considerations here. The average unit cost for a Level 2 charger, and this includes installation, is about $6,000. That increases, excuse me, it decreases, it decreases with volume. So the more chargers you put in, the less expensive the unit costs. I can speak more to that if you're interested. Infrastructure, we are finding through a number of studies and projections, must expand fourfold, four times, by 2025, that's only five years away, to provide for the growing percentage of EVs in the regional vehicle fleet. Facilities can be paid for service and they can generate revenue and have a positive rate of return. We do not expect these facilities to be free of charge. And finally, Sandag, very soon, will be offering through its CAL EVIP program subsidies for Level 2 chargers that will pay for up to 75% of the cost of the hardware and the installation of those facilities. So hopefully we'll have some folks in our community availing themselves of that subsidy. So moving on to urban forestry, here's a nice example of what urban forestry can look like. I think most of us would agree that this makes this street escape that much more attractive and certainly that's one of the co-benefits of urban forestry. The focus here, of course, is on sequestration, not so much reducing emissions on the front end, but absorbing atmospheric carbon as trees and plant life do. There are studies that show that if the planet could restore the global forest that existed before industrialization, we would go a long, long way to reducing our carbon emissions. So here's our small effort, our small part in contributing to that global urban forest, or not just urban. So we propose that new development provide tree canopy and permeable surface area as follows. So sites that are less than a third of an acre would be required to achieve 7% tree canopy and 10% permeable surface area. Slightly larger sites, up to one acre, would be required to provide 9% tree canopy and 16% permeable surface area. And sites exceeding one acre, 12% of tree canopy and 22% of permeable area. Obviously, with more land area, you've got more flexibility. I want to acknowledge my colleague, Stephanie Cervantes, who I think is still in the room. There she is. She's done a ton of research on this and she's looked very closely at what projects recently approved and submitted projects in Oceanside are achieving as far as tree canopy and permeable, plantable area, and found that these are very realistic standards. Projects will be required to prepare and implement landscape maintenance plans, and implementation is important here. Projects that don't maintain that tree canopy could be subject to code enforcement action. So what does the state require? We just learned this, so I don't have a lot of detail, I can't talk with much authority on this standard, but we know that as of this year, the state is requiring through the CAL Green Code that trees provide at least 50% shading of surface parking lots and 20% shading of landscape and hardscape areas within 15 years of installation. It's certainly conceivable that in meeting the state requirement, a project could also be meeting our requirement, so that's something to keep in mind. So some considerations, probably things you have thought of yourself. Again, on the theme of flexibility, we want to offer these options where it is demonstrated that onsite tree canopy and permeable surface area isn't achievable. So in those rare cases, we hope they're rare, we would allow trees to be planted in the adjacent parkway, where there is an adjacent parkway, and we would allow them to be planted on other sites, likely subject to approval by our Public Works Director. Some of those sites could be on private property, some of them could be on public property or in the public right-of-way. And then secondly, we're contemplating establishing a city tree fund to pay for street trees, and this would essentially be an in-lufy, again, pending adoption of a street tree fund. And then finally, I mentioned the benefit of visual quality in an urban environment. It's quite clear that the urban forest improves air quality, it improves water quality, it provides for passive cooling, which can significantly reduce energy costs. Obviously, it has aesthetic value, it can raise property values, there are studies that speak to that, and it can provide natural habitat in the urban environment. So the third and final ordinance has to do with Transportation Demand Management, TDM, which is focused on non-residential development, basically in the realm of commercial, industrial, institutional uses, business, employers encouraging and helping their employees find ways to get to work to and from by means other than single occupancy combustion engine vehicles. So these are some of the options that I'm sure you're familiar with. What we are recommending is that non-residential, excuse me, non-residential development generating at least 50 daily commute trips, prepare and implement TDM plans, achieving a minimum alternative commute mode share of 20%. I'll speak to what that means, alternative commute mode share, in a moment. Plans shall be implemented within 12 months of occupancy. You didn't see that in your exhibit for this particular ordinance, it wasn't there. So we are proposing to bring less, to bring more clarity to this particular ordinance, to establish a 12-month deadline essentially for the completion, approval, and implementation of TDM plans following occupancy of that non-residential development. And then the minimum alternative mode share shall be achieved within three years of occupancy. If it is achieved within that period of time, we would give that operation an additional three years before they had to demonstrate through employee surveys that they were maintaining that 20% mode shift. If it's not achieved, we would give those businesses another year to amend their TDM plans and come back to us with alternatives that get them to that point. Happy to answer your questions on what alternative commute and mode share means, but I will share this with you upfront. TDM's been around a long time and the focus of it in the past has really been on reducing the strain on our roadways. It really hasn't been about emissions reduction. Now that it is, at least in this Now that it is, at least in this context, we can add electric vehicle commutes to what we're calling alternative commute mode share, even if they're single occupancy electric vehicle commutes. So that'll go a long way, particularly as people adopt electric vehicles, a long way towards meeting this 20% mode shift. So what does the state require? Nothing in this realm. But the state is very engaged in the content of fuels and the extent to which those fuels contain carbon. The state's very involved in fuel efficiency standards, as you probably know. And of course, the state is providing resources for us at the local level to find that right balance between land use and transportation. And that's what we're pursuing with the second phase of the general plan update, which includes that plan, the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan that I mentioned before. We received $400,000 from Caltrans to pursue that component of the general plan update. So some things to think about. VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, in Oceanside accounts for more than 50%, more than half of local GHG emissions. And it's very hard for a local government to tell people when they can drive, what they can drive. So that's our conundrum. Most of our emissions come from this source, are wherewithal at the local level, very limited in terms of what we can do about it. This is one thing that we can do about it. Current alternative commute mode share in the San Diego region is approximately 13%. This is based on a fairly recent Sandag study. So if this is true, it may not be true in Oceanside. We're more on the periphery of the region. It may be, you know, it may be closer to 15, 18% in downtown San Diego and something less in this area. But theoretically, we're more than halfway there to the 20% mode shift. TDM can support compliance with CEQA VMT thresholds. I mentioned Senate Bill 743. This will be a means by which non-residential development will meet those CEQA requirements going forward. And this might sound, you know, a little touchy-feely, but studies do show that alternative commuting can increase employee morale, fitness, and productivity. So I want to make you aware of what we were mindful as we put these ordinances together. One, of course, we had to achieve consistency with the cap emissions reduction measures, which meant that we had to be reducing emissions more than we would be under the, what is called the adjusted business-as-usual scenario, which is where we take credit for all the things the state is doing, all the things the region is doing, all the things the federal government is doing. We have to show that we're doing things at the local level that go beyond that. And so that was one of the challenges because we were chasing state standards on electric vehicle charging. We were chasing state standards on renewable energy facilities. And we just learned with urban forestry that we may have, to some extent, been co-opted by that state standard that I just mentioned to you. We need these standards to be quantitative and enforceable. We want them to be simple and unambiguous. And so if you do see anything ambiguous in this language, please, please let me know. That is, I will tell you, that is probably the main complaint we hear from the development community. It's not clear what I'm supposed to do. I don't know what the hoops are. Just show me what the hoops are, and I'll jump through those. So we're trying to make those hoops very clear. We want these standards to be outcome-based. We want them to provide flexibility in terms of how compliance is achieved, and hopefully, that was reflected in what we shared with you. We want them to be financially feasible, and we want them to provide for a positive return on investment. And we believe that that is the case. And I have backup slides to speak to that if you're interested. And we want to support our applicants with information and resources that help them navigate these standards and reach these standards. So you saw the brochures, the infographics in your packet. Stephanie has developed all kinds of resources for those subject to the urban forestry standards, including a recommended tree list. I'm in the process of developing a TDM plan template for folks to use as an option. So I mentioned before, I'm not going to speak to the value of reducing GHG emissions. But in the event that anyone here is still on the fence or maybe skeptical about this enterprise of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, I would speak to this one, I would point you to this one important co-benefit, which is reduced air pollution. So the World Health Organization points out that an estimated 7 million people worldwide die every year as a result of air pollution, both indoor and outdoor air pollution. About 4.2 million of those estimated premature deaths are the result of outdoor ambient air pollution. What we have brought before you tonight, all of these ordinances brought before you tonight, all of these standards would help to reduce air pollution. Air pollution in this region, we're getting it under control. This will help us get it even further under control. So with that, our recommendation is that this body recommend that the city council adopt the proposed zoning text amendments to establish zoning requirements for renewable energy facilities, electric vehicle, parking, and charging facilities, urban forestry, and TDM. These requirements will implement key GHG emissions reduction strategies outlined in the city's Climate Action Plan and, as I said before, effectuate the Climate Action Plan Consistency Checklist. And I will step aside after I thank my colleague Scott Nightengel, who prepared our EV parking and charging ordinance, Stephanie, who's here with us, who prepared our urban forestry standards, and Shannon Vitale, who worked very hard on the renewable energy standards. So thank you.
All right. Did you have any public comments that you wanted to read for us?
Thank you, Chair Crell. I do have one. I will take the opportunity to mention that we held an open house back in early March. We broadcast this work widely. We received input from the Sierra Club, from the city's Bike and Pedestrian Committee, which I think has something like 75 members. And I'm going to share with you a comment from Mike Bullock, who resides at 1880 Bayberry Drive. Please ask staff to amend Section 3047 with the words, quote, "And install and maintain only electrical appliances, since electricity is approximately 45% renewable now, and this figure is expected to increase significantly over time." So Mike is speaking to the movement toward electrification, where we rely less on natural gas and more on electricity for our appliances and other other facilities that are gas-powered.
That's the only public comment?
Yes.
All right. And I know it was mentioned that we got a bit of correspondence as well. I think I got Diane Nygaard. I think Commissioner Rosales, you had your hand up? Or Louis Ball, sorry. Commissioner Ballmer. I'm used to my handy screen that tells me who goes next.
Thank you, Russ, and to your staff, Stephanie, and everybody that did such a great job. And I'm totally, generally, I'm so supportive of everything you've done, and I just appreciate all your work. And that's just the first thing I want to say. As far as little comments and little additions and little, like, have you thought of? One, and I have several, but the first one I wanted to tie and bring up is on the TDMs, the Transportation Demand Management part of it. Now with going through the COVID-19, and we've seen how a lot of people are now working from home, and that's definitely saving our environment. As we can see, our air pollution has come down tremendously because people aren't going anywhere and driving anywhere. Would you have that as a consideration in people's business plans to maybe say if they have employees that want to work from home, they might get credit for this management plan that you're putting together? I mean, that, to me, would be, I think everybody's found out that they can work from home now, and a lot of people have done that. And even the city, you could probably have a lot of your staff just work from home on maybe one day a week, and that would save a lot of money. I mean, a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. I just wondered if that was an option?
The short answer is absolutely. And we suspect that between telework and the, as I said, the adoption of electric vehicles, those two measures, we think, will go a long way toward getting businesses to where they need to be.
An easy one. I'll let other people, I have other ones, but...
Yeah, we can question them, go around. But vice trigger kind of go around.
Thank you, Chair. Excellent presentation, and thank you all for the extensive amount of work that's gone into this clearly. I have a couple of questions about urban forestry. On the canopy requirements, how would, I guess my first question is, how would that be measured? I noticed that in the state, they have an explanation as to how large the canopy would be over a period of years. But I didn't see that in the cities. So how would that actually be measured, assuming that trees are planted when they're young?
That's a great question. And it's something I thought about speaking to. I thought there might be a question on that. Stephanie is our expert. What I can tell you generally is that we will rely very much on the landscape architects to indicate on their plans what the mature tree canopy will be. And of course, that will vary by species, right? Some trees will achieve that mature canopy earlier than others. But Steph, do you have anything to add to that?
Good evening, yes. I was just going to add, the landscape and tree management plan is designed to ensure that the trees grow to their appropriate maturity level and that it's maintained at that. So during the conceptual landscape plans, architects are, on their plans, need to indicate their canopy that they're proposing. And the canopy that they're required is based on the size of the project, the site area of the project. And the landscape and tree maintenance plan is to ensure that that tree canopy is actually achieved and maintained in the long term.
Do you have a draft tree list yet?
I do, yes.
Okay. Oh, great. I actually have one more urban forestry question than I'll let others. Oh, we, oh. Can we possibly get a copy of that?
Yes, I can provide a copy.
Okay. Great. Regarding the possible tree fund, what did you call it? City Tree Fund. So where it is infeasible? So is that economic infeasibility? Some kind of subjective standard? Or can you clarify that, please?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. I would say that infeasibility in these cases will have more to do with the physical limitations, the physical constraints of the site, rather than cost. Of course, we already have landscape standards and an expectation, an understanding that that, to some extent, is the cost of doing business for the development community. So we don't see this as something that would be at all onerous from a financial or economic standpoint. But there may be sites, given their location in an urban area, given the size of the site, given what they're allowed to achieve in terms of setbacks in areas where we don't have setback requirements, like side and rear setback requirements. It may be challenging to meet these standards, even if adjacent parkway is available for tree planting.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a situation we had in mind.
Yeah, that in-lu language, because of the situation we have with affordable housing and how often it's used, it just kind of makes me jump a little bit.
I'm going to go around. Commissioner Busk?
Yeah, I'll, like my compatriots, I'll just ask a couple of questions to start with, and then you can come back. First one is, the renewable energy facilities are involving residential projects involving 25 or more units. The state requires anything less than four stories to be electrified if it's residential. Does that take precedence over our regulations? So basically, all of, my question is, most of the projects that we've approved in the last five years are substantially smaller than 25 units. And therefore, they wouldn't be part of this ordinance unless they were already covered by the state ordinance.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Busk. The state has occupied this space, so to speak. So projects of less than four stories are subject to the state requirement.
And the state requirement basically is 100% electrification?
So let me just be clear about that requirement. The requirement is that, and the state is specific that it's PV, it's photovoltaic facilities. So they don't mention wind as an option, but that PV facilities must offset 100% of estimated electricity demand. So there's not a requirement right now to render a project all-electric and not to utilize natural gas.
Right.
I know you received some correspondence from different parties promoting electrification. That's something that I think we can consider as part of the next iteration of the Climate Action Plan, but it's not on the table right now.
I agree with you on that, by the way. And the other question I'll ask right now is, applicants will be at liberty to choose virtually any tree species. That's on page five. That's not really true. It's any tree species within our selected tree matrix.
So you'll see the word recommended there. We're not limiting folks to this list. We just see this as a resource. But I will say that there are certainly certain tree species that will not achieve, without a large number of individual trees, will not achieve the standard. So trees like palms and others that are more, what would you use to describe that shape of tree? That don't have much in the way of canopy would require a lot of those trees. You know, you're Italian cypress, you're not going to get a lot of tree canopy.
I guess I'm more concerned about trees that require substantial amounts of moisture. We live in a desert. There really ought to be desert trees, not trees that would normally grow in the northwest, for example, and require hundreds of thousands of gallons of water a year.
That's an important consideration, and I appreciate that question. I have learned a lot over the last decade working with our landscape architects about irrigation for trees and the extent to which, as they are maturing, trees certainly require irrigation. But as you probably know, once they have reached maturity or approached maturity, they tend to require very little watering, even in our environment. So this sense that there's this trade-off between expanding the urban forest and conserving water is maybe not as much of a trade-off as one might expect.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Custer?
Well, my question was very similar about the trees. It would seem to me, from my limited knowledge of various tree types, that the larger canopies are achieved with the trees that require more water. So I was concerned about the water also availability and as another cost.
Commissioner Custer, I think you are, I think you're right. I think the larger the canopy, probably the more water demand for that particular kind of tree. And this is something that we have taken into account in setting those percentages where they are. So we really have worked hard to look at what other projects are able to achieve and what they're not able to achieve, and set standards that are reasonable.
Ms. Cervantes?
Good evening. I also wanted to add that our Water Utilities Department does require new development to have separate irrigation meters that come out of the city's recycled water. So there's a different irrigation system that takes care of landscape for new projects. So that will hopefully help reduce the amount of water that we're taking out of potable water for the city.
And it would reduce the expense that water is cheaper than the regular portable.
I don't, Commissioner Custer, I don't know that we know that just yet. But we do know that we are becoming a more water-independent jurisdiction with the harvesting of local water and the recycling of water. So in terms of water supply, what I understand from our water utility colleagues is that we're in pretty good shape when it comes to water supply. Of course, it's gotten more expensive over time. So that's a consideration, too, that we've taken into account in our standards.
And the roots. It seems that these, with larger canopies come bigger roots to disrupt the sidewalks and so forth in homes.
Commissioner Custer, sorry. Would you mind using the mic? Just because folks at home might not be able to hear you. might not be able to hear you?
Sorry. It's so small of a group that it seems to me that with larger canopies also come more roots to disrupt the sidewalks and grow into homes and walls and foundations.
Yes, and I appreciate that question as well. These are important considerations. What we have learned, I'm almost embarrassed to admit it, but what I didn't understand was the term drip line and what that means. But the drip line is essentially the spread of the roots and how far out those roots go. And the drip line essentially is consistent with what a, with the canopy that a tree can achieve. So yes, there absolutely is in an urban, in an urban environment, those limitations. It's common now to use these devices that contain the roots to a certain amount of spread to avoid some of the damage that you're talking about. That might result in having to plant a few more trees, because the canopy of that tree in the urban environment is not going to be what it would be in the natural environment.
Mr. Vantes?
Yes, I also wanted to add, if you look at the recommended tree list, there is a column there that indicates spread. So that is something that staff has already considered in terms of growing and the placement of these trees.
So all these things can be avoided, or I guess, that will at least be taken into account and hopefully avoided when the decision's made?
Yes, and again, we've tried to be proactive in addressing your very good questions. You know, I told Stephanie she could have the night off, and I couldn't be happier that she's here today.
Commissioner Rosales, did you want to ask any questions right now? Do you mind if I ask a couple real quick? For dividend account parking, as Mr. Bullock mentioned, do you envision that that could be something that somebody could use as part of their transportation demand management plan?
Chair Crail, absolutely. And this gives me an opportunity to note that unlike other jurisdictions that have basically established a menu of TDM measures that a business can utilize, and then they assign points to those menu items, we're not doing that. We're here to help people understand what their options are, but we're not dictating what they choose as the means by which they get to the 20% alternative mode shift. And dividend account parking could certainly be a means of getting there. I think with that type of system, you probably would need a fair amount of demand on your parking supply, so I think that's an important consideration. Maybe DAP is something that becomes more viable in Oceanside as we become more urbanized in these corridors and in the downtown area. And where there's more demand for, where there's more demand for parking supply that isn't necessarily getting any bigger.
And I have a couple more questions that are maybe a little speculative to ask you. Could you envision a modified TDM policy in the future that would apply to all non-residential uses, not just new resident, non-residential?
So it is, it is something we could contemplate in the next iteration of the cap, maybe in conjunction with additions to development. We could consider it as something we try to incentivize as well. And planning will be working with economic development and other disciplines in the city to reach out to our business community, see what they're already doing, to educate them on what they could do, and provide them with the resources and information they need to pursue measures that perhaps they hadn't thought of.
And similarly, the 20% estimated share reduction, is that something that in future iterations you could see increasing? Or is there a reason that that's a baseline that we would want to stay at?
I think if we see Sandag achieve some success with their five big moves, such that mobility options expand, become more convenient, become more cost-effective, I think that's when we can start to look at more ambitious requirements for how folks get to and from work. I think for now, in a jurisdiction like ours, we're relying a lot on telework, we're relying a lot on the expansion of the electric vehicle fleet. It is ironic that we have the transit amenities that we do in Oceanside, and yet those amenities are not as convenient to many, perhaps even most of our residents. So that's something we have to be realistic about and hope that we can bring transit closer to more residents and the workforce that comes into Oceanside. And I think that's when we can start talking about more ambitious standards.
And last speculative question, you've answered this one pretty soon when we went over the Climate Action Plan, but when do you project we would update the Climate Action Plan and therefore these ordinances?
So we're already in that, in that process. So Phase Two of the general plan update essentially requires us to update the cap, because this phase, unlike the last phase, will likely be what might be called a growth-inducing phase, where we're looking at, particularly in the context of the land use element, how we can accommodate future housing growth, how we can accommodate future employment growth. And so we will have to study the impacts of that additional housing and that additional employment growth, and that will require that we update the Climate Action Plan. So you should have before you, in roughly two years, as part of this next phase, an updated Climate Action Plan.
Thank you. Vice Chair Goodkind?
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham, could you please put the slide back up that shows the side-by-side local and state on the renewable energy facilities?
Absolutely.
Please? I have a follow-up question to Commissioner Busk. Anybody else hate these masks? Oh, my God.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, was that for TDM?
No, no, renewable energy facilities, the residential projects and commercial development.
Yes. I managed to turn that request into a blank screen. Let's see what I can do here.
There we go. And so I am confused about why the city requirements would be less than the state. Wouldn't the state supersede? And the city, more than 24 units, and the state is every house, basically, right? So wouldn't we be required to follow the state criteria?
Commissioner Goodkind, we are absolutely required to follow the state standards. So only in the event that a project is not subject to the state standards would our local standards apply. And that would largely be only in the event that a project is over three stories in height. So projects under four stories residential are subject to the state requirements. What's important here, and I perhaps didn't do a very good job of explaining this earlier, is that currently, there is not a requirement for onsite renewable energy facilities in commercial development. Let me say more broadly, in non-residential development, commercial, industrial, institutional. So that's where the city would be establishing standards that don't exist at the state level.
Yeah, I understand that, and that's excellent. I'm curious where we sourced these numbers from, the 12,499 square feet? And where did, where did those numbers come from?
Yeah, so we had to do some extrapolation, essentially. The way the measure reads in the Climate Action Plan, these standards were supposed to be, these thresholds for applicability of these standards were supposed to be based on parking. Well, I think we all recognize that parking is going to change over time. So if we set a threshold based on parking and then we start amending our parking standards, we might wreak havoc on these requirements. So we basically interpolated from our current parking standards what the square footage is and unit counts would be under those parking requirements. And that's how we arrived at the unit count and the square footage threshold.
That's interesting. Thank you. That's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Valma?
Back on the urban forestry program, the one thing that we brought up is about the INLU fee and how that kind of like has a bad taste because of, you know, we've had this from the utilities and we've done this from the, you know, the affordable housing. Is there any way you can put something on the, if there is going to be someone that's going to be able to put into the INLU fee for the trees, that it has to be used within a year? And it has to be used within our city, obviously? Which I know, I think it states that it has to be used within the city, the trees have to be planted within Oceanside, right? Is that what I understood?
Absolutely, within the city, yes.
But there may be a time limit on how you use the money? Just because now we have this fee of money for utilities and it just happens once in a while, but if there's a way you can kind of cap that? And the other question I have is like, and this is not really in the urban forestry section, but it kind of goes back to the carbon offsets and how that can be used anywhere in the, in the world on a project. Is there any way or how you feel about that, as far as can Oceanside have its own little program where, because I know the Sierra Club is very eminent about this, that that carbon offset stays within, I don't know, if it's not Oceanside, but it's in within our county at least? I mean, something where it's within breathable air of ourselves that we live? Is that something you feel? What do you think about that, I guess is my question?
I will say this, I'm going to be a little cautious in my response, because this is becoming a bit of a third rail in this realm. I think, I'm guessing most of you know what we're talking about here. We're talking about an allowance for development to essentially pay into programs, projects located elsewhere that achieve the emissions reduction that they are expected to achieve but cannot or argue that they cannot. So what I have learned very recently is that there is a standard in state law, in SEQA, regarding offsets, and that standard goes under the term additionality. So that concept of additionality, which means, yes, you can offset emissions elsewhere, but it has to be in a manner that goes beyond what the state is already pursuing and what your local jurisdiction is already pursuing. That tends to rule out a lot of projects. So for example, we've been talking about renewable energy facilities onsite, urban forestry, EV charging. You couldn't purchase offsets in a project that's going to expand EV charging infrastructure, for example, because that particular strategy of emissions reduction is already been, that space has been occupied by the state and hopefully with adoption of this, by the city. So you'd have to look very creatively for projects that really are projects that aren't subject to a requirement at the state or the local level. It requires a lot of innovation. Most of the projects are in the realm of agriculture and finding ways to reduce the net emissions associated with agriculture. And what we know is that these offsets are having a hard time catching up, the supply of these offsets are having a hard time catching up with the demand for offsets. So there aren't a lot of opportunities to purchase offsets now, but perhaps in their future, there will be more.
So there really isn't anything that, I mean, like, why couldn't they do offsets? Like, why couldn't they offset their carbon by doing something that's positive, like putting in more EV stations or something like that? Why couldn't you just buy into something more of that or supply more of that in our community, rather than try to look for some crazy project in Indonesia? We don't even know what that is, but that supposedly classifies themselves into carbon offset.
And literally two weeks ago, I would have told you that's something that we could do. Now it's an open question for me, but it's, it's an important question, and I think we need to better, I know, we need to better understand it and figure out, you know, what we could do at the local level in establishing a local offset program. So I think to your point, if you're not going to mitigate onsite,
Right.
at least you're mitigating within the city of Oceanside.
Yeah, or in the county or someplace close.
Or in the region.
Yeah, in our region. I just have one more thing I was going to, if I can remember where I was going to say it now, darsh, oh, senior moment. I knew, I had it on track what I was going to ask.
Louise moment.
I can't remember. Anyway, forget it.
Commissioner Rosales?
Yeah, just one question, and we were talking on this slide about the metrics on the left-hand side. So the additions of 1,500 square foot and them being required to be solar-ready, did that also come from some, tell us, like the other ones, did that come from some other source? How do we get to 1,500? Which seems like a rather large size, because most, is this residential or commercial?
Both.
Both. Yeah, for residential, 1,500 square foot addition seems rather large. I mean, they seem mostly to be under 500, 800, something like that. So it's going to miss a bunch of them, I guess.
Yeah, so I would call this a first stab at this, Commissioner Rosales. The state does require, as you can see, does require that new development be designed to be, to be solar-ready. We have seen other jurisdictions apply this threshold of 1,500 square feet of additional space in existing development. So we were kind of riffing on what others have done. And our motivation, I would say, is this. In the traditional sense, Oceanside is a pretty built-out community. So the prospect of seeing a lot of new development that meets these thresholds is relatively low.
Right.
And so to the extent that we can start to see these facilities implemented within our existing building stock, the better, the more energy independence we can achieve.
Yeah, that's exactly in line with what I was thinking, that we're going to miss a bunch if it's 1,500, because the new stock, we're not going to have a whole lot of. So then you go to the next level, but you make that number, 1,500, smaller, so you do capture some of the existing better than 1,500. Just a thought.
Right, right. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Commissioner Busk?
Yeah, I have, actually, that was one of my questions, the same thought, on residential. For residential, should it be 500 square feet, which seems to be like the typical addition, or 1,000 square feet, which might be a granny-flat addition?
Yeah, I mean, just one last thought, we did a major, what I thought was a major addition on our house 10-plus years ago. We only, to me, it felt major because it was so darn expensive. And it was about 380 square feet. So to me, 1,500 would be like enormous, like an entire new house.
Yeah.
New house. So I'd like to actually, I'd like to go back to TDMs for just a second. When you, this 20% reduction in TDM is per business unit or per project? And the question I have is, for a business park, if a business park is constructed and has room for 10 separate businesses, is the 20% for the business park or is it for each individual business?
Thank you, Commissioner Busk. Conceivably, each individual business in that park, in that complex, could produce a separate TDM plan. That seems rather inefficient for them to approach it that way. So our expectation generally is that the TDM plans will cover those multi-tenant or multi-space facilities. That obviously will require a fair amount of coordination and communication between the different businesses that ultimately occupy that space. And it's one reason why we're giving folks 12 months from full occupancy to get a plan to us that we agree is workable and that they can implement.
That was my assumption as well. So the follow-up question then is, it seems to me like the three-year, the three-years extension might be an awfully long time, because that's six years from the initiation of the business park. And I don't know how long these businesses last in the business park, but I would guess the turnover is relatively quick compared to six years. And we might have a better handle if it's two years after or an annual reporting responsibility.
Commissioner Busk, what I like about this question is it has me thinking about what we need to put into that TDM plan template. And you've helped me appreciate that there may be this flux, and that's something that the entity that creates and implements that plan will need to be mindful of and need to address. So I will look for an opportunity to insert into that template something that establishes that the plan needs to speak to, how it will address that flux, and how it will communicate with new businesses, that these are the standards and that each business, each tenant in that space has to do its part to maintain the 20% mode share.
Thank you.
Haven't heard from you recently, Commissioner Custer, did you have anything? Haven't heard from you recently, Commissioner Custer, do you have anything?
Not at the moment.
All right. Anybody over here? Commissioner Volm?
I did remember what I was gonna say, my senior moment came back. It was the thing about when you said protect against the grid, back when we were talking about solar panels and all of that, and, but when you, when you think about that, unless I'm not understanding all the things that you guys have been researching out, I'm sure you know a lot more than I do now. When you install your solar panels on your roof, you're pretty much still part of the grid, and when the grid goes down, you're down. So are you thinking of a battery kind of like option for cities to have, that our own generation of solar then goes into our own city's backup? Or how did you mean by protecting against the grid? What were you thinking about that?
Yeah. So I spoke to distributed energy, which is moving away from the concentrated utility-scale generation of energy, which is often remotely generated and then comes to us over long distances. Distributed energy is energy that's closer to its end-use. But I didn't really close that loop because ultimately what you would need to establish is what they call a micro-grid. So the city, conceivably, and there are businesses around the state, there may be jurisdictions around the state that already have these in place, the city could continue to draw power and distribute power to the larger regional grid, but would also have the option basically of removing itself from that grid at various times, maybe during these outages, and relying on local generation and perhaps storage. So storage really seems to be the X-factor these days in the ability of localities to provide, I guess you would say, energy security, given that renewable power isn't generated all day long. So it does look like storage ultimately would be something that would have to enter the picture. It is getting more efficient, it is becoming less land-intensive than it's been in the past, and there are a lot of projects out there that are on the cutting edge of storage and we're seeing progress. So I'm hopeful about that.
Mr. Hunt, did you have something?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I received an email from Diane Nygaard, and she suggested she asked her comments to be read into the record tonight. We've only read Mr. Bullock's into the record.
I'm not sure that I received that City Planner Hunt, that correspondence, but I'd certainly be more than happy to read that into the record.
Well, again, our protocol is to read the first 50 words and to give a summary.
Right.
She, she said the Sierra Club, the Bicycle Coalition, and I also submitted comments for tonight specifically to be specifically read into the record. Do you have copies with you, where would you do that?
So the correspondence from the Pet and Bike Committee did not instruct me to a 50-word excerpt. So that, Commissioner Rosales, I think, is the letter, can you, can you tell me the date of that?
March 26.
So that's, that's that committee's initial correspondence, which was encouraging us to be more ambitious in our standards and we, it's not something I spoke to, but we have been responsive. I think the chair of that committee believes we have been responsive to their comments, and they submitted to you a subsequent letter supporting specifically our TDM measures. But I don't believe Mr. Luchterman, who prepared that letter, asked that that be, that we share any of that at the dais.
And what about Diane's comments along with the Sierra Club? She alleges that they were requested to be read into the record. Could, I mean, could we just give a summary or?
And I have Diane's, if you don't have it in front of you.
I don't have correspondence from the Sierra Club. I have the correspondence that is in the agenda packet, yes. But I don't have correspondence that speaks specifically to where we are today. Those comments were responding to earlier iterations of these ordinances, what we brought forward in the March open house. So perhaps if Ms. Nygaard is listening, maybe she could email us that language that she'd like us to read into the record.
Or perhaps we could read the Sierra Club's, or just, again, it's just a summary is the public testimony aspect of this COVID process.
Well, I have this letter.
And again, I'm not sure if Ms. Nygaard is speaking to the letter that they provided back in March, or if they produced something new. I will tell you that I did reach out to Ms. Barbara Collins today to ask if there was any additional correspondence from the Sierra Club on this matter. We've, we've had a fair amount of dialogue, we've talked about their earlier correspondence, but I can't say that I've received any additional correspondence from the Sierra Club or anything that asks that I read it into the record. I hope I didn't miss an email.
Mr. Hunt, Mr. Cunningham, I have at least two items that I think may get close to what we're trying to get at here, and again, if Diane's listening, maybe she'll send them. But I did get as part of Diane's email, a memo from Roger Davenport with the Sierra Club. I'll try to be brief in summarizing, there's a recommendations section. And so it begins with the comments above, and the references we have attached show conclusively that all-electric construction has advantages in cost and provides many other benefits for both new construction and most retrofits. Plenty of other cities have shown what can be done. Given those general conclusions, we have the following particular recommendations for Oceanside and for our Climate Action Plan. And the following are seven, and I will only read the bolded heading for each. Number one, no new gas hookups. Two, encourage retrofit electrification. Three, avoid installation and maintenance of gas infrastructure. Four, consider water heater upgrades as quote "low-hanging fruit" for greenhouse gas reductions. Five, encourage rooftop solar photovoltaic along with electrification actions. Six, add air conditioning to older homes. And seven, the city of Oceanside should lead the way, in which he describes the city buildings moving forward with water heaters. As far as Ms. Nygaard's email, that included that attachment, she addressed Honorable Chair and Commissioners, our CAP Climate Action Plan was a first step, but has a long ways to go to actually achieve meaningful greenhouse gas emission reductions. These first four implementing ordinances are already six months late, but need to be stronger if we are to actually start to see real change. The single most important improvement you can make tonight is to require full building electrification in new construction. The attached white paper details the economic health and greenhouse gas reduction benefits of building electrification. It shows what 30 cities in California have already done. Please modify the renewable energy ordinance to restrict gas hookups in new construction or at least require electric heat pumps for space and water heating. This will get us on the path away from fossil fuels and help optimize the benefits we will get from a future CCE, Community Choice Initiative. I hope that gets it, and if Diane, you're there, let us know.
Chair Crell, if I could acknowledge that I received from Ms. Collins of the Sierra Club at 6:53 this evening, correspondence that was delivered to the Planning Commission address, email address at 11:15 today. I've not encountered, and I'd be happy to share, to summarize what's here. It doesn't explicitly ask that I do so, but I can summarize what I see here, which may speak a little bit to what you just shared. I am familiar with Mr. Davenport's comments, which got to you. I'm not sure if you're seeing anything in there, that explicitly directed staff to read this into the record. If so, I apologize.
I'm not seeing it in terms of the actual reading or not, but yeah.
Russ, maybe you could, again, the protocol is the first 50 words to at least give the gist of the, of the email.
Sure. So I think consistent with what you shared from Ms. Nygaard, there is reference to TDM with an interest in targeting existing employers and establishing requirements for existing employers to produce TDM plans. On the renewable energy front, as you, as you mentioned, a desire to see us move toward electrification, all-electric buildings. I would only say to that, that as I mentioned before to Commissioner Busk, that's certainly something that we can pursue as part of the next iteration of the CAP. It wasn't part of our mandate under the Climate Action Plan, the current iteration of the Climate Action Plan. So we've tried to stay consistent with the measures as expressed in the current Climate Action Plan, which is not to say this isn't a worthy goal, it just may be something that we address going forward, so that we better understand the implications of electrification. I think a fair amount of study would be appropriate before we go in that direction.
Thank you.
And then with respect to urban canopy, they're suggesting a higher percentage of tree canopy for smaller sites on the order of 12% to 14%. It looks like they're not favorable to the tree fund option. And then with respect to electric vehicle charging infrastructure, the suggestion that the charge, that the energy powering those chargers be 100% renewable. I'm not sure how that would be achieved without all of the power coming to that facility or generated at that facility being renewable. That's essentially what I'm seeing here.
Thank you. I am amenable to some of those changes, particularly the prohibition on new installation of natural gas hookups. I understand you, your comments about studying it more, but I think it could go the other way as well, that, you know, not requiring them for a little while, and if we see that there are problems with that, then we can change it as well in the future. So I would recommend that any motion to approve this would actually include the prohibition on any new development installing natural gas hookups. And I would also be, I'm a little weary about the tree fund thing since we've seen that as well. So I would think that that'd be one that we could also maybe consider not including. And while we're at it, I mean, I know I'll go too far sometimes to pick which ones y'all want, but, you know, the minimum tree canopy area, just having a flat 12% instead of trying to pick the numbers for the size and just do 12% as the minimum for all of them. So that would increase the 7% to 12, 9% to 12. I would think those three things are pretty reasonable for us to include in here.
If you would expand and explain the no natural gas hookups?
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that one at all.
Yeah, I mean, that to me seems to take an entire use and, but go ahead, I don't want, if you want to explain that.
Yeah, I mean, the idea being that we would use only electricity for the same purposes that you can use for natural gas. They're substitutable, you know, there's plenty of buildings that are already fully electrified without natural gas hookups. So it's not necessary for buildings to have natural gas, and given the fact that it's not a renewable energy, it's not sustainable, because it's a fossil fuel, moving away from it will help us reduce greenhouse gas emissions by not encouraging it to future developments.
Well, I'm more inclined to not do it in this phase, so that we have time to investigate it ourselves a little bit. It's kind of drastic to throw in when we haven't read all this and not been thinking about that aspect.
And we're going to have a new CAP in two years.
Yeah.
And we can, by then, we'll have enough information to make an informed decision.
Right.
As opposed to today tossing it in with very little information.
Science is pretty well established on it, though. What's, what's left to study? I mean, I love my natural gas stove as much as the next person, but would be happy to, you know, give it up if I bought a new house.
Well, also, this has been out for public comment, and, you know, we was, I would think, want to hear what the public had to say before we just throw it in, out of the blue.
With all due respect, we add and modify items pretty often.
Yes, but to me, this is a more drastic one than a lot of the ones we've added since I've been here.
Well, for the record, I agree with all of your suggestions.
Commissioner Rosales?
And I would, I would just kind of echo what Commissioner Custer said, that if we're, we're taking kind of a step here, we're taking, we're doing a certain, we're going in a particular direction on a number of things, this one, I think, could probably wait. I mean, there are other things we could pick on, I picked, I picked on the 1,500. If I, if I could have my druthers tonight, I'd say, well, let's do it 200 square feet. So, but I'm not going to do that. I think Russ indicated that we'll get another chance at this down the road, as too we would with the natural gas thing. I think it is pretty direct to kind of go that direction right now, just my thought. I mean, I know you think differently, but.
What? I'm sorry, what was the word you used?
Direct?
Direct.
Yeah. So I'd rather see it, we pause on that one and take that up when we take it up again in the next iteration, so.
About the canopy, now, it's a third of an acre, has to be 9%. Anything under a third of an acre has to be 9%? Is that currently?
I'll have to go back to the slide.
Or 7%. I believe at 7%. Anything under a third of an acre is currently at 7%.
Actually, I can look in the staff report.
Well.
But I believe that's correct, yes.
You know, some yards are just so small that to increase that just seems extreme to me, to make it, to what would the next one be? 12%? Is that what you said? It seems extreme to me on a very small lot. I know it's done on a percentage basis, but I like the gradual increase. More land, more trees, on a percentage basis.
Mr. Cunningham?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is that a percentage of the actual lot size? Is that what you're referring to?
Correct. So we have what we call lot coverage standards that apply to the buildings, so it's essentially the same concept, where the tree covers, shades, lot area.
So can you give us an idea of what that looks like in practice? So if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, which is typical for a house, what does, what does 7% of canopy trees look like?
Yeah, I might defer to my colleague on that, but as she gathers her thoughts, I would say presently, Commissioner Goodkind, we really require only landscaping in the front yard of single-family homes. That's largely been for the purposes of curb appeal. So we see any number of applications in rear yards, right, where sometimes they're completely paved over, where there's no, there's no plantable area. So this should encourage the use of areas not developed, perhaps more efficient use of areas not developed for these purposes here. So maybe we get more of that canopy, not just in the front yard, but in rear yards as well, maybe even inside yards.
Commissioner Goodkind, so for example, a 5,000 square foot lot would be about 350 square feet of tree canopy required. That can be achieved with one large tree or one medium and small tree. So it is achievable. Based on recent projects that were submitted and/or approved by Planning Commission or City Council, projects that are under one acre generally had anywhere between, let me see these numbers, about 9% or so, maybe less than that, projects under one acre, that were on the actual site. A lot of the projects already incorporate the public right-of-way along their site as part of their entitlement review, so we were trying to make sure that the requirement is on the site, not along the public right-of-way as well.
And 12% would be approx, what, one extra tree?
About 600 square feet of canopy, so that would be one large tree, maybe a couple of medium trees.
Sounds reasonable to me.
And, and given that there are feasibility accommodations included, including the tree fund, it doesn't seem particularly extreme to require 12%, in my opinion.
Well, now, so you said, what percent is 350 square feet? Is that 12% or, I mean, 9% or 7%?
350 square feet is 7% for a 500 square foot lot.
Right, okay, so, but even, now, the one acre is currently, what percent did you just say? I mean, it seems like we're stepping it up quite a bit with the new numbers over what you said was the past, is what I'm saying. With the numbers that are in this document, it seems like we're already stepping it up quite a bit over what we currently have. Is that correct?
Commissioner Custer, that is correct. Currently, the city, we don't require a number for tree canopies. Some of the zoning districts do require trees. For example, single-family homes are required to have one tree in their front yard. We do require trees in parking, in surface parking areas, but there's nothing that requires a minimum canopy or a minimum tree number for project sites.
Right, I didn't say correctly, excuse me. Just to clarify what I was saying. Right. I didn't say correctly. Excuse me. Just to clarify what I was saying, you said there's an average or something. You said an acre currently typically has an average of X, correct? That's what I can't remember.
Yes, on recent projects.
Currently, how much is the X for what we currently have an average of?
So for projects under one acre, it's about 9 percent. And like I said, that includes trees that were planted along the public right-of-way as well.
Right, okay.
And Commissioner Busk and then Commissioner Obama. Commissioner Busk, did you, I thought I saw your hand go up. No?
I was just going to comment on this, this little, we're going back and forth on it. I mean, I think it needs a little bit more study because, yeah, Southmore Hills, no problem 12 percent to do tree canopies. But when you're talking about Pacific Street or in the beach area here, like with all the town, all the lots we have that are pretty much just like cookie cutter houses, I don't know if 12 percent would fly there. So you kind of need to, I think that these guys have already done some studying. I think it has to be looked at a little bit more intelligently before we just say, yeah, let's do it. Because I don't think it's going to work in the beach areas at all. And lots that are bigger, Rancho Del Oro, all those areas like that, I don't think it's me a problem. But I think that in these lots, in the coast area, I don't think it's going to work.
Commissioner Busk?
I agree with Commissioner Obama. I, my backyard has a 59-year-old orange tree in it. It literally dominates the entire yard. It takes up about 10 percent of my 5,000 square foot all by itself. But that's my house and my back. I've had a number of landscape architects come in and say, chop that baby off and get it out of here and let's upgrade or update your landscaping plan. So in a 5,000 square foot lot with a 1,200 square foot house and a detached garage, 12 percent canopy cover would be a significant portion of my house. So like Commissioner Obama says, I really think we need to look at that closely, particularly in the suburbs that are established.
I agree.
And some of the new housing developments that we've looked at that are almost zero lot lines.
And at the risk of the horse being beat, the, you know, there are feasibility accommodations. And that's why, you know, I don't think it's saying every lot does have to have 12 percent. It's saying that if they can accommodate it, they can do it in other ways. But I appreciate hearing, I think, you know, there's a clear majority opposed to that item. So that's perfectly fine. We can move on. We are open to a motion, of course, as well. We can continue the discussion of anything that we'd want to change after that, but it would move us forward if somebody would like to.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Rosales?
Let me pull out my agenda item again. So I'll make a motion that we adopt zoning tax amendment. Boy, there's a bunch of them. ZA 2003, ZA 2004, and ZA 2005, and ZA 2006, and local coastal program amendment, LCP 2003 slash ZA 2004, ZA 2005, ZA 2006, which in doing so will establish standards for renewable energy facilities, electric vehicle charging facilities, urban forestry and transportation demand management, and establish the amended text of zoning ordinance articles 10C, 11C, 12, 13C, 30, and 31 as part of the local coastal program. I think I captured it all.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Busk, second. And, yeah, please, Mr. Cunningham.
If I could, prior to the vote, I did mention earlier that there is some ambiguity in the TDM ordinance, which doesn't clearly establish when a TDM plan would have to be implemented. So we are proposing that that is within 12 months of full occupancy of that non-residential facility. And we ask that you recommend that change to the TDM ordinance.
I would, I would add that stipulation that it would be within 12 months of occupancy as stated by staff in my motion.
Second is comfortable.
I find that a friendly amendment.
Wonderful. All right, then. I will say, great job, Russ. You've continued to move this down the pipe. You know, I look forward to the next iterations, which is obviously why I asked those questions about what those will look like. And I hope that we can, you know, look into maybe at the TDM applying to, you know, new, not just new, you know, non-residential, maybe increasing that 20 percent commute share, I think would be great to really look forward and continue to be aggressive. Moving down to the 1,500 square foot addition, you know, down to 500 or 200 for additions, because I agree, as we do infill, that's going to be the opportunities. I do think we're going to be talking about prohibiting natural gas hookups. I bet by the time we come around for the next iteration of this, the state will already have done it. And then, you know, I don't like the tree fund, but we'll see how that goes. And, you know, the canopy percentage obviously is another one where we can look to be aggressive. But I think this is a great start. I appreciate where we're going.
Yeah, I would just like to echo, if I might, Chair, that I think Russ, it's Russ and team, because this was a team effort, that you guys did an outstanding job. It's a really good start. There's a lot of good things to kind of nod our head at and say, you know, good job for sure. And as the Chair indicated, there'll be other opportunities for us, other iterations where we can learn and bring some other things into the conversation and additions. And I do think we, in those new iterations, we do reach back a little bit more aggressively to existing development and look for opportunities there as well. I think that that needs to happen.
And we will convey these thoughts to our council members as well as part of that presentation.
Great, thank you.
So thank you.
Commissioner Obama?
Just one more little comment. Thank you again, was that the TDM plan, the TDM plan, it'd be kind of nice if the city actually would, I know in one of, two of our letters, the Sierra Club and also the Bicycle Committee, both stated that possibly the city could maybe start their own TDM plan and maybe be like, kind of in a way like your own focus group to kind of go through how it's going to work for businesses. You guys could maybe try it here at the city and see how it works and kind of start developing some of the stuff just by firsthand experience. So just as a food for thought, like, maybe you guys step up to the plate and do, be, you know, just do it.
Any other comments before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that was unanimous. Mr. Hunt?
For the record, we'll mark that as six in favor, zero against.
Great job, team. Thank you. We will now move on to item number seven, the general plan conformity findings for the capital improvement projects, or capital improvement plan, right? CIP projects is not a double, is it? Anyway, Mr. Toshack here, waited a long time for us.
Thank you. All right. That's a tough tack to follow with Russ. So I've been with the city for about 13 years. David Toshack, engineering division of the Development Services Department. This is my first time presenting. If you all remember Gary Kelson, or if you were Gary Kelson, he would usually present this. And so I'll walk you through it fairly quickly. You should have, hopefully had a chance to look at the CIP budgets that were made available during the workshop. But the workshop was presented and on April 29th to the council. And that project will, those projects and the CIP will be going to award by the council on June 3rd, the council meeting on June 3rd. Pretty consistent, we have, the majority of the projects are the same. And from last year, a lot of carryforwards, ongoing design projects that are still in the books. We completed 18 projects, or we basically have 18 new projects and 23 completed projects in a year, very similar, annual overlay projects, annual septic seal projects, storm drain projects, things of that nature. So again, our programs are SB 1, transnet, traffic signals, bicycles, drainage parks, and so, and then water and sewer. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of Lindsay Lohan, the principal water engineer. She has only one topic on the agenda and sets in the staff report. So we have projects, of course, that I'll start with transnet. And probably the biggest high-profile project there is the railroad safety crossing improvement project. It's actually improvements that we're doing at the five crossings throughout Oceanside in an attempt to get a quiet zone. So we have a lot of coordination going on there. Some of the issues have changed to where we're coordinating with NCTD, basically the federal railroad administration, and California Public Commission and Mission. And their rules kind of are changing and their thresholds are changing that we have to try to match those and do some coordination with that effort. Also, inside the transnet project, we have the Coast Highway corridor design program. That project is moving forward and remains in the AR phase. And then, then we have the other projects in transnet would be the Douglas Drive and North Coast Highway projects. And those projects are simply still in the environmental process. The Caltrans is asking us to do more investigations on geotechnical soils and soil samples within the river. And that takes some coordination with the Army Corps to keep those projects moving forward. Downtown fiber optic, that is, again, more communications that some of that work is going in with the Cleveland Storm Drain Project to make conduits available for future improvements and fiber optics. Payment Management Program, we basically opened bids for the overlay on May 12th this month. And we're going to approve that contract, or take at least recommend approval of that contract, about $4.6 million in, on June 3rd, along with the overall budget. The overlay, the slurry seals, the next project we have going on, an annual project, those bids will open on the 28th of August. Again, slurry seal is more of a preservation effort versus a reconstruction effort. We are applying a new technique this year that we have that the award includes a new process that we're pretty excited about and found an opportunity to use it, which is called full death reclamation, where we actually go in and we grind up the existing materials, lay that back down. We actually don't haul it off. We don't take trucks. And there's savings in emissions from hauling asphalt in and out. We're actually reusing materials that are in the ground and reapplying that. Thoroughfare projects, we have projects that are still in the books there. We are working in College Boulevard. We actually took that to council on May 6th, and they approved the FEIR for that project. So we're moving in, we have funding for to move into the design of that project, a couple widening segments. Some of it stays, we had a writing statement consideration for the fact that a portion of college will stay four lanes, two lanes each direction where some of the homes are that exit right onto the, onto the street. So that'll stay four lanes. That was the recommendation. Street programs, we have pretty much the same projects there. Traffic signal projects, that's something that is new. We have a signal under construction right now at San Ramon and RDO. That's a community there, San Ramon Village there. We put in a traffic signal, and that's the place we're actually doing some slurry seal or overlay projects there as well. Let's see, drainage projects, we are still working on the Cleveland Storm Drain Project. Basically, that one is at 100 percent drawings. And we need to get into an agreement, again, with the NCTD. There's a grade crossing where the pipe is going at the Surf Rider and NCTD grade crossing there. We need to go into an agreement at that location with NCTD. The, it's going to Coast Commission, but the alignment stays the same. There's so many utilities in the streets on Cleveland and Surf Rider, there's not much place we could put that pipe other than where the existing pipe is. So we're looking at pretty much an environmental clearance of a CE on that project and then getting Coast Commission's consent on that project as well. Parks projects, we actually have four new projects going forward in the parks program under the CIP. And one of the projects we have going on right now is the beachfront improvements. And we finished up Tyson Project last year, and now we're kind of finishing the, I would say, a sister project to that, which is the beachfront right next to the pier. They were, both those projects, both those facilities were designed by the same architect. We just went to the Measure X Fund. So initial buildings, pretty much, there's no changes there. We have the same projects carrying forward, along with bicycle route projects. Those are projects that have been on the books, and we're trying to move forward with those projects. Measure X funds, we don't have a budget book yet, but we did take that, Brian Ford, our sitting junior, took that to the Measure X Commission just last week on 5/14. Projects in that program are sharing some of the funds at the Beachfront Center. Buccaneer Beach, the improvements down at Buccaneer Beach next to Long Island Creek, where they are decommissioning the Los Lanis plant. Also on side of Measure X is a fire training tower. It's a facility that will basically help the fire department train real-life situations. It's a concrete structure. They put burn apparatus in there and the firemen get a train. So they're doing that improvement at the existing Jones Road site, the training facility there. Sewer projects, there's a significant amount of projects there. Of our $285 million overall budget, water and sewer combined to about, about, I'd say about $220,000 of the $285 million in projects. And most of our projects are focused on upgrades of existing aging and undersized systems. They had to have some special projects. The Buccaneer lift station is, they're decommissioning that, and they're sending the, with the lift station, they'll send the sewage up to the existing facility off of, off of Douglas. Harbor improvements, we're doing projects there as well. Some of, many of them are the same projects. We did put together an ADA access project. It's next to the tunnel that goes underneath the NCTD tracks from the parking lot to the, to the east that goes under there. So we're going in with basically new, more improved devices that actually warn people and cars who's coming where. So if the pedestrian's in the way, instead of hitting your typical ADA access button, warning devices will come up and they'll flash to let people, cars, know that people are coming through the tunnel in addition to, you know, highlighted crosswalks, the more, kind of larger striping across. And then some of the flashing beacon signs along Harbor Drive South there that parallels the track. And basically, each of the projects go through their own environmental approval process. And in summary, we believe that the CIP project is consistent with previous years. And again, it's consistent with the requirements of the general plan. And that completes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And did you receive any public comment?
No, I have not received any public comments.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and bring it to the commissioners for questions and comments. I thought I saw a couple hands. Commissioner Busk?
Just a couple of quick ones. The million-dollar question is, when will the quiet zone be instituted?
Well, that is a million-dollar question. I answer it about five times a day, every day of last, we had scheduled, I took over the project for Gary Kelson in about November. We had the holidays, you know, Christmas, Thanksgiving. We pretty tried to pick up pace on, in January. At that time, we thought we were going to be able to establish the quiet zone at the end of April. The answer to your question is, we don't know. It's kind of out of our hands. There's this coordination with NCTD, FRA, and CPUC. We have to reapply for the project. One of the things there is, is there is a, what they call, the FRA calls a risk index, and there's a threshold to that. When we ran the calculation in 2016, the project had passed. And it passed without consideration of the credits that you would receive or risk reduction you receive at Wisconsin and Surf Rider. And the reason that is, is because there are driveways within 50 feet of the crossing. So while all the other crossings have a, basically a reduction of 75 percent, those two locations are kind of uncertain. So they didn't include the calculation in 2016 because it passed without it. Traffic patterns, traffic volumes, train volume, you know, number of trains on the tracks have changed the risk index. So it actually fluctuates. And for that reason it fluctuates, the FRA won't consider the calculation that we did in 2016 as the final determination. You only can do the calculation when you're ready to submit what they call the notice of establishment. So there is basically a 60-day reapplication period. There's a 60-day notice of intent period, even though this will be our third request to submit a notice of intent. We submitted one in January. We're dealing with 16 different people from about nine different agencies. So they all have to have time to get back to us. So worst-case scenario, we believe that we need a 60-day application period, we need a 60-day notice of intent period, we need a 21-day notice of establishment period. So in the beginning of April, we were ready to submit this application, which is the time you do the calculation. And we had found out that, again, we didn't meet the criteria to establish quiet zone. By adding Surf Rider and Wisconsin, at a reduced percentage of about 60 percent, we would have this rather significant buffer compared to the passing score versus the failing score. The reason why that's important is because once you establish quiet zone, doesn't mean it's in perpetuity. You could lose the quiet zone if something were to happen, accidents, a change in regulations which is occurring. We actually ran the calculation when we were to submit in April. We ran the calculation in March 30th, and then we ran it again on April 15th. And even the value in those two weeks, the percentage has changed. One of the reasons why that is, is because the FRA is still gearing up toward more pedestrians. When originally established, it was for vehicles. Now it's more for pedestrian traffic, foot traffic, things of that nature. And they wanted to, although suicides aren't a factor, they want to start looking at that because a lot of the people in the railroad believe that sounding a horn can snap somebody out of a suicidal state. However, we don't know if that's true because it's not a regulation. And there are quiet zones in Southern California where they have 13 suicides. And the railroad isn't simply satisfied with 13 suicides in quiet zone. So they don't want the same thing to happen here. So the rules are changing. We're basically trying to hit a moving target. That's why it's hard to hit that date.
So basically, we've done all So basically, we've done all the physical changes that need to happen. Now it's a matter of applications and time and...
Yeah. And, and there is, there is one thing that we have to work with, with NCTD and that we're trying to set up a meeting with their operations center, is that there is a pedestrian crossing at the south end of the Ocean Side Transit Center and it's for the Sprinter tracks. So the Sprinter trains come in and they sound their horns. And the Sprinter train is a subdivision from the mainline tracks. So a year ago when Gary was running the project, we said, well, the Sprinter horns are quieter than the mainline train, so maybe we could get away with it. We're getting complaints about the speakers at the new platform they built on the south side there, that the speakers are too loud. Well, the Sprinter trains can blow their horns just as loud as the railroad, the mainline trains. And since those Sprinter trains are about 15 years old, there's conversations about upgrading their trains, which would require them to blow louder. The third thing is, they are talking about extending their pedestrian walkway from the one track to the second track to get to their new platform. And that would require the sounding of horns. So if we, I've discussed with the possibility of, let's get our quiet zone on the mainline and then we'll go back and get our quiet zone for the Sprinter track. The Sprinter track alone doesn't qualify or meet the criteria of a quiet zone. So the only way we incorporate the Sprinter trains at that pedestrian crossing is because it falls within the boundaries of the existing Sprinter or existing quiet zone that we are trying to establish now. So unfortunately, we were shooting for April, the rules kind of change on us, moving target, and we're trying to coordinate with NCTD to, to meet that deadline. There's some other issues that we don't think are quiet zone related, but the FRA would like a sidewalk between Mission Avenue and the platform, because a lot of people are actually taking a shortcut, instead of walking down to Cleveland and walking down the sidewalk, they're actually walking on the ballast to get to the new platform. And they don't want people obviously walking on the train tracks within their right of way. So we have, we have several moving targets that we're trying to coordinate and facilitate. So...
Okay. Second question is, on the drainage project?
Yes.
This double storm drain capacity on Cleveland between Ocean Side Transit and Surf Rider?
Yes.
That road was just brand new and rebuilt because when we put all those condos in? So is that road going to get torn up again?
The road is going to get torn up again, unfortunately. So the, the problem with that is, well, the problem with that was that the master plan of drainage wasn't finished until 2013, therefore we couldn't condition the developer to put the storm drain in. We did try to coordinate with the developer that had outside of basically parking lot 23, that mixed use building. We tried to coordinate with them and try to get the pipe in the ground. It, it just didn't work out, the coordination effort didn't, didn't work out there. Unfortunately, there was, and then we even tried to work out, we did receive some credits for the paving, there's paving that they were supposed to do, so we got actually a credit and money back for us to apply to the storm drain project. And it's unfortunate, but we tried to coordinate it in a timely fashion, but it just didn't happen. So we have to go basically from Surf Rider on, and Cleveland, from Surf Rider down to Seagate, and then from Surf Rider down to the beach. And we're going to try to phase that out, but unfortunately it didn't work out. We did, if it could have been a condition of a development, we would definitely included that in the condition of a, for the developer to upsize the pipe.
Timing. Thank you.
Commissioner Bowman, then Commissioner Rosales?
Okay. My question's just, okay, the economy, we all know it's like going down the, down the tubes. So how much does this affect your, I think you said $280 million budget?
That, that money is pretty much, well, we've made adjustments as we've been doing the budget, we've did a lot of changes. We started our budget discussions in September of last year. And in the last month, I've, we've, I think I've seen about five different iterations of each individual program. So we're trying to project out, but a lot of that money that we have right now has already been set aside. I think we're going to see the effects of budget, basically our, you know, our gas tax, our SB1 funds, I think they're going to drop dramatically, but I think there's going to be a lag. I don't think we're going to start seeing the effects and cutting budgets seriously until probably the next, next fiscal year, the 2021, 21, 22 fiscal year. So, yeah.
Commissioner Rosales?
And I think most of those, you said that 200 something million, most of it were sewer projects and what, and those are enterprise funds, so, you know, they won't be affected by the budget so much. No, my question following on Curtis, Curtis, Mr. Busk? Commissioner Busk question about the, all of the quiet zone stuff. Is any of, because you gave a lot of status updates and where things were and you're working, you've been working this whole thing for a while. Is any of that communicated out to the public through, either through the city or NCTD? Because I get questions from friends that live along the corridor about the entire process. So that, the whole thing you walk through, is any of that communicated in any form out to the public?
Yeah, Commissioner Rosales. What we do is we have a webpage online that we update on a regular basis. Unfortunately, the last couple months I haven't updated because this decision on this pedestrian crossing at the, the Sprinter crossing, pedestrian crossing at the OTC Center, there was two options that we go with there. So I was looking from direction from the city manager's office and I'm getting them involved to sit there and talk to the higher ups at NCTD so we can coordinate. Because there is a, the problem there is there's a gate that has to go in, instead of just signs. Now, we, we can establish a quiet zone much sooner if we were okay to just put some quiet zone signs up, but there's already kind of a pre-existing condition with that crossing that goes in where they have to have a, a gate that drops down with the flashing devices. That's about half a million dollars and it's about 10 months of time to order the, the equipment and fabricate the equipment. So while we think on the short side of things, we could probably have a quiet zone in three to four months with the sign approach to the work, the long end could be almost a year if we have to order materials. So I haven't updated the webpage recently until I got some direction back and get coordination going with the NCTD Operations Center. But yes, it's available, basically my name's on the project, I get a lot of phone calls that we, people call into our, our public stuff inquiry, the confirmation comes to me. So I keep a log of the communication I have with residents, but at the same time, most information should be available and updated regularly on, on the city webpage.
Thank you. I mean, I, I, that was my point, is that communication should be part of the effort because people want to know what's going on with that. So appreciate that.
And a lot of, a lot of the residents are willing to share information I provide with them with their neighbors. So I just, I treat, I basically talked to about five to six people that are basically regularly calling me up on a, on a monthly basis, like, what's the update this month? So they share that with their neighbors.
Thanks.
Vice Chair Goodkind?
Thank you. The $350,000 traffic light, isn't that supposed to be paid by the developer?
The condition on that project, this is again, the Mission Myers intersection, correct? Yeah, there's, there was a condition of, of the project that was required to do that. I don't know what decision was made to where it became a CIP project. I could look into that and get back to you as to who made that decision to, to have the city fund that signal.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. I'll just mention two little asides. I happen to work for the federal government, so if the Federal Railroad Administration is being non-responsive or, you know, just unreasonable in some regard, please reach out and the congressman may be able to prod them a little bit.
Yes.
Just as a, as an offer there. And then regarding the revenue loss, another thing regarding the congressman is that, that on Friday, a bill was passed that would have provided for Ocean Side $94 million for Ocean Side's budget. And when we talk about a general fund of around 150, that'd be a significant amount. So hopefully, hope we'll get help and that staunch some of that loss of the revenue from sales tax and things. Anyway.
That's the Heroes Act.
Well, we do need to take an action here. Would anybody like to?
I'd like to compliment David on his presentation. We were used to Gary doing these, but you did a very, very great job. So thank you for your, your, you were very candid and I liked your spirit when you gave, delivered, so you did good.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess I could make a motion that we approve, let's see, what am I, that we, see, where's the name of it here? That we adopt the general plan? Here it is, over here. Hold on, I wasn't ready to do that, I was just trying to give you a compliment. Put on the spot, yeah, why don't you do it? Because I...
I'll do it. I move that we determine that the proposed capital improvement program for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for the City of Ocean Side is in conformance with the general plan and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020 P17 as attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Custer seconds, is there any further deliberation before voting? Doesn't look like it. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none, that was unanimous, Mr. Hunt?
For the record, we'll mark that as six in favor, zero against.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eight, election of downtown advisory committee planning commission representative. I envision the process here will take nominations, if there's more than one person, we'll vote on it. If there's more than two, we'll just do like lowest vote getter gets eliminated and move it down to two. But if there's only one, we won't need to. Commissioner Busk?
I, Ms. Goodkind, Vice Chair Goodkind has expressed an interest in this, so I would like to nominate her to be part of this.
I have not. Chair Crahell has though.
Committee?
Yeah, I, no. I have not expressed an interest, but thank you. But I will, I will nominate Chair Crahell because I know that he has expressed an interest in this position. Are you still interested in it?
I'm perfectly happy with Kurt staying on, frankly.
Yeah.
He knows the, the issues that we've been dealing with.
Are you, yeah, are you interested in?
I'm fine with staying on.
Does that mean you want to stay on?
Certainly.
All right. So we have Commissioner Busk, any other nominations?
Can I ask just a procedural question for that? Given that Mr. Busk, excuse me, I keep saying that.
Can be either commissioner or doctor.
Commissioner Busk?
Not mister.
At some point maybe, so is this a year-long process or a year, year-long, okay. At some point, he may be competing to maintain his, his seat on the commission here. So do we want to have a backup, just in case that happens? Could we do a backup or just, I'm just trying to, not to suggest that Commissioner Busk won't get reappointed, but just in the event of...
Just never know.
Yeah.
How would that work if we're...
I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
So if we elect or appoint Commissioner Busk, reappoint him to this position tonight and he were not to get reappointed to the commission, we would just select somebody else? Is that how it would work, Mr. Hunt?
Vice Chair and Commissioners, that's how I would see it. There's nothing preventing you from having a, a second or an alternative in case he's sick and in that case, that person could take over if Mr. Busk loses his seat, but it's up to the body, whatever you guys want to do.
Actually, that's how I, I, I got the position when a prior commissioner was not reappointed.
Were you the alternate at that point? Okay.
No, we just, we just had our meeting and I was appointed at that.
Yeah, so we could, we could finesse it and say, okay, we'll select an alternate just in case, or we could just leave it alone and if that were to happen, then do it at that point. I just, I just merely was raising the issue, so I don't care. I don't have a particular, I'm not leaning either way, so.
I think we should, I think, I think we should cross that bridge if we come to it because hopefully he'll be reappointed.
Put out positive thoughts.
Okay, positive thoughts.
Then I'm going to close the floor for nominations for the, I guess the primary spot, if we want to call it that. And seeing that there's no other nominations, by acclamation, you, Commissioner Busk, Dr. Busk stays as our appointee to the downtown advisory commission. Item number nine is cancellation of the June 8th, 2020 planning commission meeting. Was there any commentary on that, Mr. Hunter?
Mr. Chairman, no, other than we don't have any agenda items, so that's, that's the reason why. We're not purposely trying to combine meetings out of COVID or something, it's just coincidental that we don't have any items.
Well, that is a good serendipitous thing then. Are there any objections to the cancellation? I can't see why.
I'm sorry, which one's getting canceled?
Uh, June 8th, 2020. Yeah, it's item number nine on the agenda, kind of snuck, hidden in there at the top of the page.
Just, just a comment to the city planner, it seemed at one point, pre-COVID, you would walk us through the calendar of, of things coming up and it would seem like we were pretty busy and lots of things going on. And it seems that now in the COVID mode, we're not busy, there's not much going on and, and the June 8th one is now not going to happen. So is, did something happen or was that my imagination that it all sort of slowed down so quickly?
Chair and Commissioner Rosales, the level at the planning division, we believe has actually stayed somewhat stable. There's different data that we monitor and probably the biggest one is phone calls and emails and our statistics on those are fairly steady. They, they waver, of course, so, and we look at that as a precursor to actual entitlements. I think there may be statistically some decline in our actual hearings, but then again, these hearings have been going on or the hearings are for applications that have been in the works for months. So I don't think the decline right now is necessarily due to COVID because these applications were submitted six, eight months ago, sometimes 12 months ago. But we are in the process, it's an interesting question, I get this a lot lately, kind of like the quiet zone for David, you know, what's our entitlements looking like? People are very interested in that and so we are looking into that question. At this point, we don't believe that there's a significant downturn in our entitlements.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Then we can move on to the next portion, there's our reports and I'll just mention a couple of items. You all may have gotten the notification, unfortunately, that the Independence Parade got canceled. So that's a sad one to hear, but in good news for work stuff, the Ocean Side Special Shoreline Study, which is the study essentially to see what harm to our beaches occurred by the harbor being constructed, the federal harbor, not our harbor, which was supposed to happen 20 years ago, is going to be codified, hopefully, that the study must be completed within two years, within two years. So if that gets done, the prospect for a large amount of probably sand replenishment, but money coming from the federal government for that is high. So hopefully we'll get that moved forward. Similarly, the San Luis Rey River Flood Protection Project, which is another Army Corps project in the city, which has been around since 1970, looks like we're going to get in under the wire, there's a two-year cycle, we're going to get in under the wire to be able to make sure that the funding ceiling is increased for that. Right now, the project hit the funding ceiling at the Army Corps and so it can't move forward, which the longer it waits, the more growth there is, the more endangered species, habitats and things. So those are two good news things. And then you probably also saw on the news that Buena Vista Lagoon Hybrid Saltwater Alternative was finally moved forward. So that would make a huge difference. And if we're talking about sand on the beaches, I imagine the dredging would probably end up, you know, getting some of the sand on the beach, especially down in south Ocean Side area, so. Vice Chair Goodkind?
I have no report this evening, thank you.
No prepared speech this time? Commissioner Bowman?
Well, if you haven't already heard, we have our, another agritourism venue out in Southmore Hills, it's the Milano Farm Stand. They opened up a farm stand now off North River Road, selling mainly flowers and, and some like fruits. So anyway, it's kind of a step, it could be, you know, it's a very small start, but these guys are the commercial farmers out there and they've, they've taken the step of why not? Why don't we do that? Even when COVID goes away, they're still going to continue with the farm stand, they want to. And it may increase and it may be something that comes before the city in the future. It could be another Bates Nut, Nut Farm, who knows, right? It's just a baby step thing, but we're pretty happy with it.
I heard there's a survey for Southmore Hills right now.
A survey?
The city is doing a survey, at least I, I just thought it'd have to come out today. So you should definitely encourage folks to...
I didn't, I didn't hear about it.
To do it, yeah, Southmore Hills survey. I'm sure Jeff might be able to. Commissioner Busk, did you want to?
I'll just follow up on the lagoon comments that you made. The Sandag folks presented the lagoon plan to the Carlsbad City Council last week. They kicked it around the rostrum a little bit and voted unanimously to support it. So our city council unfortunately won't take it up until after Sandag has supported it. But they know about it, they approve it in concept, but they won't discuss it until after the Sandag has had their presentation on May 22. And it looks, it looks good right now. Yeah.
Commissioner Rosales?
Yeah, just along the lines of the farmer, farming community out in More Hills, one of the families out there has been doing order online and deliver to your house, I think every other Friday or so. So we took advantage of it, that was great, it was, you know, supporting a local, cheap too, a whole box of fresh produce for $25, you don't, you don't get a say in what you get, but it's pretty nice, so. The only other comment I had was, I, I've been getting a lot of questions from friends The only other comment I had was, I've been getting a lot of questions from friends and family about the proposed development at Crouch Street and Oceanside Boulevard. Most of it not very favorable if I could sort of get a sense of what people feel about it. So I, you know, again, they were asking me about it, how could they do this, et cetera and whatnot, and I think I've seen a couple of things on Nextdoor Neighbor as well. So the only comment I had or suggestion would be to make sure that the city does a good outreach program prior to the item coming here, workshops, outreach, whatever might engender the, the community around there who probably isn't too keen on it going in there, to at least get educated, maybe not to persuade anybody one way or another, but at least to get educated about what's going in there, because that's generally the gist of some of the questions, you know, aside from, you know, they not thinking it's a good idea, but then, well, what's going in there, and how's that supposed to work, and traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So just a suggestion to you, Jeff, that maybe if, if it's even feasible, if we're not in this weird COVID mode, that some kind of outreach, extended outreach be done for that project. It's a large project, and it's going to be very impactful in that area, so.
Jeff, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, I appreciate those comments, and we'll certainly work with the applicant to have a robust outreach. Depending on COVID, there may not be a actual workshop with people in the same room. I don't, maybe it will be with social distancing, we don't know. But the idea of having a good outreach is definitely part of the program. The, the project is a mixed-use proposal. It is right next to the Sprinter Station, and so it is consistent with smart growth, smart growth policies. If you'll remember, the Grand View Point project that went in up on the hill, just up Crouch Street, a number of the people who opposed that project said, well, the density or new housing should go down next to the Sprinter Station, so that's what's going on now. And of course, some people don't like that either, but we're used to that.
Yeah, and oddly enough, a couple of the comments I heard was, in lieu of COVID, having found a real grip in high-density areas like New York City, how could they, how could Oceanside entertain high-density housing even if it's in the corridor where it kind of makes sense? And I didn't have a convenient answer for that, but point was well-made, I guess.
That's a question that's coming up a lot, particularly being raised by people who oppose any kind of growth. And statistically, there's a lot of different data. If you look at the City of Hong Kong, which is generally referred to as one of the densest cities in the world, they've got a very, very low positive test rate. So there's a lot of different factors that go into it, and I think we need to be careful that people aren't coming to a conclusion already and then using some data and some convenient stories to support their conclusion that's already made. When I studied science in high school and college, we were taught, you study the data and then you make your conclusion, rather than the other way around.
Yeah, and to the, and I'll leave it alone after this, but to the outreach type of effort, those sorts of questions or comments will come out. How can you do high density, given that? So if some of the messaging is built around some data points and information about, well, in Hong Kong, it's, it's not so much an issue, you know, sort of, sort of along those lines, I guess.
It's interesting, because we've had people who suggested that exact issue, that we shouldn't be proposing high density, and yet they opposed the North River Farms because it wasn't in a smart-growth area. So where are we supposed to put our housing? And if the answer is, we don't put any housing anywhere, well, that has ramifications, too, with overcrowding and costs and crowded households. One study on COVID shows that crowded households is a problem, rather than high density. So it's, it's going to be an argument that we anticipate, and we anticipate having answers as well.
And you know, like all of us, that people will argue both ways when it's convenient for them, so.
Thank you for bringing facts to the discussion. Appreciate it. Commissioner Custer?
Nothing to report.
All right. Mr. Hunt, back to you.
It's getting late so quickly, your agenda items. June 22nd, the Inns at Buena Vista is scheduled. Now, that's different than the Buena Vista Lagoon Enhancement Project. This is the one that has three hotels and a parking structure. Matlak Variance is tentatively scheduled. And then, as was alluded to during the presentation on CAPS, the VMT, vehicle miles traveled as a SEQA threshold, will be coming to you and asking for your endorsement of that. On July 13th, Left Coast CUP was continued to, and that's as far out as we go with the Planning Commission. On council, they did have a budget workshop on April 29th, and due to salary savings, due to unfilled vacant positions and reductions in maintenance and operations, that's how they're going to balance the budget at this point. May 6th, the Medleaf CUP was heard. You guys recommended approval of that, and council did approve that. May 20th has two big projects. That's this Wednesday, Alta Oceanside, which is a mixed-use project on the, the site with the gentleman's club, I guess is how I would describe it. Mixed use, 309 apartments, including 26 very low-income apartments. It is subject to a state density bonus, similar to the Grand View Point project that I just talked about earlier. 5,400 square feet of commercial. So that's Wednesday, May 20th. Also, Sunset's mixed use, this is at Horn and Pierview, 76 apartments, 22,000 square feet of commercial. Both of those on Wednesday, recommended by the DAC for approval. On June 3rd, we'll take the time extension zoning ordinance and the blanket amendment that you just reviewed and recommended tonight. So that's June 3rd to the council. June 17th, the climate action ordinances that you just reviewed tonight, and then potentially the adult cannabis cultivation ordinance on June 17th. Going all the way out to August 5th, council doesn't hold meetings in July. The ADU ordinance that you recommended approval on is scheduled for August 5th, and then the VMT as SEQA threshold and is a possibility, and then inclusionary housing update as well on August 5th. The general plan update, just real quick, is they are working on a public participation plan, even given the COVID limitations. You heard about a survey that was put out on Southmore Hills, that's one example. There'll be other examples, there'll be other surveys, along with the corridor plan and other focused elements of that.